Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five meeting of the Newcastle Town Board. The board has been an executive session and I would like to ask for motion to open the work session.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Alright, we're going to start with a discussion on the leaf blower local law. Uh this is a law that has predated me, it's been on the books for at least four years, someone will correct me if I'm wrong. There has been an extensive education campaign on this law, it's been advertised and explained in many different publications. The town newsletters, social media, it's been on um you know signs at the triangle, at the Millwood Shopping Center, on the electronic board. Um what other avenues of communications have we have we utilized for this uh education campaign?
The townwide mailing.
Townwide, that that's right, I knew there was something major, the annual mailing.
Yeah.
That should.
Community Day, yeah.
Um Community Day, it it so the point is, it has been communicated in many different ways.
Yeah, Community Day. Please say.
Yeah.
Right. Uh at this point, we have uh residents who get warnings issued to them. And this has been going on for four years, so we have reached a point now where it's time to go towards enforcement of the law. So we have our uh Chief of Police, Chief Jim Carroll here, who um will go over the enforcement mechanism that he believes is viable for for our town.
Yeah, so we will start issuing summonses to observed violations of the leaf blower. Decision has been made to issue it to the homeowner. Um we'll also issue summonses based on a supporting deposition from a resident um who's willing to state that they did vi- see a violation and they're willing to come and testify going forward.
And that that's a requirement, is it not Jim? That's a legal requirement.
Yes. Yes, the officer either has to witness it or somebody's got to swear to it and be able to testify to it.
Right.
And Vicki, uh we have uh Building Inspector Tom DePaul here tonight also, I'll let him sit at my spot uh because he could talk maybe to what's
Okay.
uh what's happening now, so I think when we're receiving these complaints, they're kind of uh two-pronged, right? So sometimes they're calling the police desk and sometimes they're notifying the development department.
Dur- during business hours Monday through Friday, they usually see an email or call contact the building department. Outside of tho- those hours, they contact us.
Good evening all.
Good evening Tom, thanks for thanks for being here.
Hi Tom.
You're very welcome. Currently when a complaint comes in, we record the complaint and the data and is our policy to mail to the address that's being complained to, the uh copies of the pamphlet that we have on file. There is a door hanger and then a pamphlet as well and I believe sometime last year, we did about sixteen of those mailings to the complaints that come in. Now complaints are not always founded, you know, they they are landscaper in an area and there's not a direct address that's associated with it, they're seen doing their their work in that area. We will deploy if we are in the area to check that, but it's been the mailings that have gotten the most success from.
Right, and and I remiss, I will repeat that the law is that you no one is allowed to use a leaf blower
Gas.
with
Gas, gas.
I'm sorry, a gas leaf blower uh from June one through September thirtieth.
That is correct.
There are exceptions, I believe the school district is accepted from that law.
There are exceptions in our chapter ninety noise code that allow the school district and some town functions and cemeteries to use blowers.
Okay, I should have said that before starting, just so people know one more time. Um okay Tom, now how many complaints have we received on average? I suppose they've increased over the years, but.
Last year there we recorded sixteen complaints, the police department I believe had additional six.
Six, yeah.
So you know, prior to that, they were random. I don't think the general public knew how to orchestrate this. They used we don't wanna condone people following the landscapers so that you know we as zoning compliance officers can go out and address this. I don't wanna put anyone in harm's way because the recipients that we found of these pamphlets, very few speak English. So thankfully the pamphlets are in multiple languages and we were able to get the point across, turn it off, put it away, move on. But there's just a proliferation of different landscapers out there now that you know coming into the area to work that they all see the signs, they should have seen the signs. So we've done a very good education task force trying to get this out to them. We handed out hundreds of those yellow pamphlets. You know, you see people working, you see leaf blowers on the ground. Granted, there's about eighteen municipalities that have leaf blower regulations, the other thirty or so in Westchester don't, so they they work in other places, so they're gonna have these devices with them. It's only when we see them, deploy them can we really address it.
Right, but to to be clear, we're not issuing summons to landscapers. We're we're going to be
The building department has not issued summons.
Issu- Right, um but as um Chief Carroll mentioned, we're going to issue summons to the homeowners
Yes.
Yes.
a- as the responsible party, we're we're not going to go after the after landscapers.
That is how I understand.
Yeah.
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 And and just that's akin to cause like um for example, building code violations of you know you control who who comes to your to your place, to your home, right? So when you have a building code violation, doesn't go to the contractor, goes to the homeowner, they're the ones who get hit with violations, so same thing with this. This code allows individuals, corporations to to be issued summonses, but you know as you addressed earlier, in terms of there's an enforcement issue here too in terms of have to have to observe and attest to to seeing this go on. That's gonna be in in your camp and then ultimately Justice Corps if it gets to that point. But again, it really goes to the homeowner because they're the ones who control who comes onto their property.
Of those sixteen or twenty-two, how many were repeat offenders, if any?
So our our six, there there was none.
No.
Now we we didn't experience that.
So after they were warned or seen, yeah, to your knowledge, there's no more reports about those particular homes?
To my knowledge, those homes did not come back
It's good.
by the same offenders, you know, they're you know, the homes can be close knit, so you can get in a cul-de-sac, you know.
Did you find that it was the same locations, like same neighborhoods?
No, no, it was random, yeah.
No, I wonder if word of mouth will do it, we haven't enforced the law in all the four years it's been on the books. We had someone come in from Scarsdale, a resident who had been active in this effort in that municipality and they talked about the success of it there, and so I'm I I wonder if it's a matter of enforcement and word of mouth and people generally want to comply when they see that, you know, it is being enforced. So uh hopefully there won't be too many of these summonses issued and people will get the word and and comply, and as you say, different municipalities are requiring this now. Um you know, the landscapers would have the equipment, so it's a bit of a mystery why they're still using the gas blowers. But um it's a mystery to me anyhow, I see people in the audience smiling, but um in any event, we will be enforcing the law and um we'll see what happens.
Right.
Are there any other any other questions? Now I know there are people in the audience maybe to talk about this, but this is our work session, we'll have public comment uh in the meeting portion of our entire meeting. Okay, alright, so we will move on now, I would like to um
Thanks Tom.
introduce the topic of traffic safety and a speed limit study, I'd spoken about this some weeks ago. Um I know that the the governor had introduced a new law back in twenty twenty-two to allow municipalities to reduce their speed limits from thirty to twenty-five miles an hour in residential areas. Now I know that there have been many recent complaints and reports of unsafe driving in town. Um there's always been unsafe driving, but it seems to have truly increased and um I mean just the other day you know, we've heard that a dog was run over on King Street, someone was racing down the hill there and it just seems that we've had a lot of near misses, so I think this is an important issue, we should address it. And uh I would like us to take advantage of the governor's new law to reduce speed limits in residential areas, that might not solve the entire problem, I think we'll need an education campaign. But um part of that law is that the speed limit reductions have to be accompanied by engineering reports. So unfortunately, there has to be some expenditure and some studying, but we believe that we can do an area-wide study. So we wouldn't have to do an engineering report for every street. We believe that we can do it town-wide, so I'm going to um give this over to Lino, our attorney, and the and Chief Carroll to talk about the details of how we can go about um making this change legally and practically.
Yeah. Yeah, so the law half is that um towns over fifty thousand residents have the ability to set the area speed limit or suburban town, which I recently found out that we're one of sixty-three of nine hundred and twenty-three towns in the state that can do it. So um because of that, we met with a professional engineer who specializes in traffic safety and talked to them about doing it and they thought it was quite feasible. Um they've actually done five or six because this is picking up some traction in other neighborhoods. Um so uh we met with them, they gave us a proposal and it's gonna be in your hands after that. Um but we do wanna clarify that it doesn't affect county roads or state roads, we don't have the ability to change that, just town roads, so.
Right, and there was something about a different type of road, collector collector roads.
So there's a collector road and there's I think there's seven collector roads in town, Douglas, Art Scrabble, Huns Place, Lake, Crotton Lake, Shingle House, maybe one more, uh Reader's Digest and Roaring Brook, so they look at them a little different, but do the fact that three of them are already twenty-five miles per hour already, I don't see that going up. But they'll do a more in-depth study on the collector roads to determine whether or not there should be a reduction.
I I haven't read the definition, but I'm assuming collector road means a road where um other roads converge going into a main area, whether that be a highway or the main center of town.
Yeah, or col- or or connecting parts of town.
Connecting parts of town, okay, alright, okay.
So that's that's where it is.
And we'll review the proposal because again, because we're suburban, they could do one comprehensive study to look at the entire town as opposed to just doing a study for each particular so town road, so that's what this proposal tells and we'll take a look at it.
You you said it doesn't apply to, we can't do this on the county and state roads. Is there any process with the county or the state to request changes?
Sure, on a state road, the town board could um could do a resolution requesting the state do a study on an individual road.
That would be the DOT.
Yeah, you yes, um
Means we can even get them to agree to shrub trimming to make.
Which 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 would be years from now, they actually, the board did do it at one point for King Street Hill reduction from thirty and they wouldn't do it, so it um in county, you have to go through the commissioner of the county, all the county roads about thirty miles an hour, so I don't see them changing that.
Yeah, I mean we we had asked the DOT to authorize us to trim shrubs that were technically on private property to significantly increase site site distance and visibility and increase safety and because there were no um significant I don't wanna say them, but uh I mean they wanna see how many injuries and accidents there have been on a road before they change anything. So it's quite unfortunate, I don't have high hopes for changing um
I've I've I tried to get the
DOT processes.
To shave, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I I just shaving the roadway uh by Whitber Wall on one seventeen so that you have better line of sight, they wouldn't do that.
It's really good, yeah.
And I must say shaving the roadway, I'm not talking about the the trees, I'm talking about the actual physical like retaining wall to push it back. Hard enough to get them to come for trees.
Well, we're gonna do what we can in our town and appreciate you looking into this, we'll all take it from there.
Right, and I I just wanna stress that safe driving is not just a matter of reducing the speed limit. I mean it is a matter of people complying with the speed limit, but it's also about distracted driving.
Yes.
You know, being on your phone, texting while driving, which is I don't know how people do it. But um being on the phone, being distracted and you know other manner of activities that might go on in a car with kids and whatnot, so there is a level of distraction that we can't police, but I hope that we don't have to police all kinds of you know, common sense behavior regarding safety, I think that people should be aware that these actions do make a difference and that a split second really does matter when you're driving and you know, it's a residential community and or wherever you are, whether you're driving in the city or in a small suburb we care about lives and everyone cares and what you do really matters. So but I'm I'm very glad that we're able to undertake this traffic study and that it's town-wide so that if we can do it in a feasible um fiscally responsible way, so thank you for looking into that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, next on the agenda, let me give the agenda. Uh okay, we now have a proposed law, local law regarding camping in public places, so people may wonder why we have such a law, um just to let people know, we have had um sightings of one or more camper vans around town that move from one spot to another um utilizing our local traffic and parking laws in very strategic ways. And so there has been overnight campers, um I'm not saying that this is a tremendous problem, but it's something that we need to address and residents have alerted us to this and some of us have seen it, so we now have a proposed local law to fill any loopholes that would allow people to camp in our public roadways. Um so Lino, do you wanna go over the law of this?
Yep. Sure, I'll just, yeah, I'll just add that this local law uh comes from a village upstate New York that had a similar issue. So the the high level of law, it it basically prohibits camping and lodging on public streets and publicly owned or town property. So that's what the local law is aimed to do and again, it's it's we borrowed it from another village, um you know, village upstate that had a similar issue, so that's where we borrowed it from, we just held it to uh town uh Newcastle and we included it in Article Two of the uh town's vehicle and traffic and parking law. So again, you have a draft proposal that's uh for you, take a look and if the board wants to schedule a public hearing, they can do so. It's not a zoning law, but so it doesn't require a Gmail, but if you're happy with it, you can schedule a public hearing.
Okay, um I I just wanna stress also that it except, there's an exception for special occasions or special events, although overnight sleeping on the street, I don't know what special event that would be, but
The the record department allows the Boy Scouts quite often to to camp up a wood ballpark.
Okay. Oh, okay.
So they could do something like that.
Right, so special occasion, special events are still still allowed. Uh so I would think we would um schedule a public hearing date?
Yes.
When would that be, based on the notice notice period?
Uh Christina's showing June twenty-fourth.
June twenty-fourth.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and last topic of discussion is that we have a revised nine eleven memorial proposal. Um we had a proposal that um former town member and uh fire commissioner Michael Wolfenson has worked on very hard with a with a landscape architect to um to revitalize the nine eleven memorial at Getney Park. It was um apparently not, the original design was not um was not built to in the way that they had anticipated for various reasons. Um there were budget shortfalls, there were problems with uh the infrastructure that had been Um there were budget shortfalls, there were problems with uh the infrastructure that had been installed. And so we would like to uh review this with them. We've had a request for um revitalization. We had um a budget presented to us that we have um kind of tailored down and uh separated uh you know between this year and next year, was not in the budget for this year. But um I the the area was meant to be a place for contemplation and you know for reflecting the biodiversity of the region and native plants. So it's a it's a nice um good concept and we would like we'd like it to be revitalized in honor of people who died on nine eleven and the first responders and people from our town who who died as well and who as first responders went went over to help. And it was a reflection of how the country came together um on a very important, you know, solemn occasion. So Rob, do you wanna go over the proposal?
Sure. Um this is something that uh as you mentioned, Mike Wolfenson came to us late last year. They had a proposal that was um was pretty significantly, it exceeded a hundred thousand dollars. Uh we it came too late last year to include it in the budget. Uh so we asked them to come back to us this year. They came back to us, I think it was the last meeting in March, and they kind of revised the design downward a little bit. They had a range in that prior uh proposal from it was fifty eight thousand to about eighty six thousand uh in discussions with the board. Um you know, this was not included in the budget for twenty twenty five. So what we asked uh Mike to do and and the um the designer Stefan Yarback, we asked if he was able to kind of phase this project out so it it wouldn't be a budgetary hit in any one particular year. So um we've now given him, uh we're looking for approval to uh cap the cost uh the total cost at sixty thousand dollars. We'd like that to phase it uh with thirty thousand dollars in twenty twenty five and thirty thousand dollars in twenty twenty six. Uh this is gonna be a collaboration. Stefan's gonna design this. Uh I think we'll end up bringing a contractor in, but we're gonna work with the Parks Department, Garden Club, uh Dennis Corelli, our environmental coordinator, to uh to work on some plantings for the area. And uh we've reviewed this with uh Ike Cuzio, Superintendent of uh Recreation and Parks. He is okay with the design of the project. He feels that they can um they can maintain it. I think that was one of the issues the first time around is it wasn't properly maintained. There's a water feature there that has a pump. He did not believe, Ike did not believe the pump was properly installed. So the pump kept flooding and burning out. Uh they had issues with pipes freezing. I don't think it was ever properly winterized. So uh with a better understanding now and maybe a better design, I think this will be uh better plan going forward.
Yeah, I think the difference this time is that Ike was involved in in taking a look at the the specs and the um the mechanisms that that would pump the water
Yeah.
and create the waterfall. So I I I just wanna make sure that Ike is on board and approves what what is being installed because he'll have to maintain it. So it is really I it's important that we collaborate with him.
Yep, so uh Mike Wolfenson has kept Ike uh in the loop and and he's aware of the proposal.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on this?
No.
All right. Thank you, Rob. Um okay, let's go over administrative items.
Okay, administrative items for tonight, we have uh three different different retroactive payments of clients. Uh we have the adoption of the monthly reports from April of twenty twenty five, the adoption of the minutes from twenty twenty five. Uh we have the authorization to extend the contract for tree removal, pruning, vertical mulching and stump grinding. That's for our contractor Alpine. Uh last year was the first year of the contract. They did a great job. Uh we're allowed, we're permitted under the contract, three one-year extensions. This would be the first of three extensions. Uh we have an authorization to award a bid for DPW water treatment plant chemicals. We have an authorization to accept uh funding from New York State for our roadways. So we have several different sources. There are all acronyms. We have CHIPS, Pave New York, EWR and POP funds. That's for the state's fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six. The total amount uh this year is five hundred seventy nine thousand nine hundred and eighty nine dollars. Uh last year, we used five hundred and sixty one thousand five hundred and ten dollars. So it's a a slight increase over the prior year.
Okay, and Rob will have a list for residents of the roads that are being repaved.
Yep, I think Bart is finalizing that. So in the spring, uh Bart and his crew go through the town and and assess all the roads, how they came through the winter, the condition of the roads, and they'll have a recommendation to the board for uh road paving, which is usually completed towards the end of summer. We try to get it done before school's back in session. So usually in August, we try to get that completed depending on the availability of the contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have an authorization to attend conference for police. Uh chief is sending two sergeants to uh training conference in Saratoga Springs. Uh we have the authorization to approve the Village of Pleasantville annual annual operating water budget reconciliation. So if the board remembers each year, uh once we have our completed audit results, um we share expenses with Pleasantville for the water treatment plant. Um at the end of each year, we tally everything up. Uh this year, we had a significant surplus, so we're refunding the share to Pleasantville. Uh their share is two hundred and forty six thousand six oh nine ninety four. Uh prior year, we ended up with a deficit and they owed us. Uh we have authorization to approve a noise waiver for uh Mount Kisco Country Club, their annual fireworks display. Uh authorization to approve a noise waker uh noise waiver for the Into the Light event on June eighth. Uh we have authorization to use town property, two different. So we have a couple different uh Horace Greeley groups. Uh the first one is the Helping Our Heroes Veterans Club. Uh they'd like to hold a dog walk uh on a portion of the uh train station parking lot on June seventh. Uh they originally requested twelve P M. The chief and I talked and he feels it would be better one P M. I know that's the electric car show that day, so we're trying to avoid that. That will be finished. Uh the chief will have an officer in the area still with the farmer's market. So uh the high school group was agreeable. Uh that's a fundraiser. They're raising funds to uh donate a service dog. Okay, we have another authorization to use town property. That's for uh Horace Greeley student uh senior experience. Uh they would like to use the area uh in the circle uh in front of Bobos on four different days. Uh May twenty ninth and thirtieth and June second and third, they're gonna set up arts and crafts uh for children out out in front of that. Uh we have an authorization to approve the banner request for the Strawberry Festival, a street opening bond permit release and a resolution in support of, this is a um I'll read the name, resolution in support of the Coastal Rehabilitation and Resilience Projects Grant application for the decommissioning of the Minkle Dam. Uh the board will remember over the last few weeks and months, we've had some discussion over the funding for the Minkle Dam. Uh unfortunately, that's gonna come in significantly over the original cost estimate due to some changes the D E C and the Army Corps are requiring of the project. Uh and that combined with the possible loss of some of the funding uh through the FEMA BRIC grant that we've heard about through some of these federal cuts, uh is gonna end up with a shortfall. We are requesting, this is an additional uh funding source that Sabrina identified. She's working on the uh grant submission. We're asking for a little over three point eight million dollars to uh assist with funding for this project. Uh and finally, I think we have uh authorization uh to share service for um new other New York State County bids for the purchase of a twenty twenty five Ford F one fifty for the Public Works Department. And did I miss one? Oh, we have one other one, yeah. Uh this is for the um
Oh, one more.
uh the surveying for the phase one of the sidewalk on one seventeen. This is in front of uh the mobile gas station. So we're looking for authorization to accept professional civil engineering and professional land surveying services uh for J M C. That is the contractor that the fire department is using and we're looking to piggyback on their contract. Uh that's for phase one, uh and that's just around the mobile station on that corner there. Uh phase two of that project would look to possibly extend that sidewalk. Uh I'm not great with directions, to the south on uh one seventeen down to Salem. Uh that would be a second phase of the project and that would require an additional amount for surveying. So uh there's a little more involved in that and uh town engineer Jeff Gaspar is uh looking to put that together.
Rob, would you be uh be able to give us an estimate for that phase two, a time estimate?
I don't have it exactly. It's there are a few more uh intricacies there. There are a couple properties that are uh that are right on the roadway there. It might be seriously impacted if we were to put a sidewalk there. So um Jeff's gonna have to look at that and put that together.
Okay, cause I know there's a lot of interest in that because people, there there are a lot of households there and people actually do walk
Yeah.
there and it's quite dangerous. So I'm hopeful we can work something out. Okay, all right, thanks, Rob. Okay, that concludes all the items uh for the work session. May I have a motion to close the work session and open the town board meeting?
So moved.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh Rob, any announcements?
Christina, do you wanna share our parking renewal?
Sure.
Certainly.
Hello, is it not working? It's turned off. No, I think now it's on. I just wanted to remind everybody that it's time to renew your train station parking permits. Also, um merchant permits should be renewed. It um you can do that the uh in person. We always love to see you. We have a drop box downstairs with copies of applications. So if you fill it out and um provide the necessary copies and money, which is legal drop box for us. You can also do it online. Um the merchants, they do have to either mail in or come in person. But the other ones, meter permits and the standard permits, they can all be done online. June fifteenth starts the new year. We ask for you to please not wait until a couple days before because there's always a little bit of a rush and it's the same amount of people that work in that office. So we try to get through everything as as quickly as we can, but
Christina, can I interrupt you? I know that this had changed during COVID and people got very mixed up about it. But just to confirm, June fifteenth had always been the date, right?
That's right.
So we're just going back to what has always been
Correct.
the
Yes.
the cut the the start date.
Uh yes, about um I think it was about two years where we slid the the dates, but we return, we've returned to the original dates. Um that was the date last year as well. So I think it is um a good date for the community. The the other date that we had was a very hectic time of year, year end. Anyway, so we're going back and we um urging people to please purchase the permits and um we're happy to help you. Any questions? The phone number is two three eight four seven seven three.
And we have done something different this year. There have been signs around town.
Yes, we did. Um we we've donated, we caught by surprise. So we did purchase additional
Yes, okay.
um signage and we've um tried to place them strategically throughout town. We also did push alerts, our new parking program that we thanks to the board, they uh allowed us to do that last year. So with that, it pushes um emails to anyone that has a permit. The people that don't have permits, that just use the app, it pushes out a notice through just the app. So you don't even have to be a permit holder. So we really think um instead of we we're doing a much better job of getting the message out.
Right.
Okay, thank you, uh Christina. Okay, uh I am going to hold back my supervisor's report for the newsletter since we are running late. Um Rob, do you have anything for the town administrators report?
Yeah, just briefly, I'll point out that the uh annual uh drinking water quality report is going out in the mail this week. Uh residents should see that. Uh a lot of information in that packet as well. We have a flyer from the S A B. Uh we have a flyer from the development department, quite a few other flyers in there uh with important information. But uh as we typically do, the town uh met all standards for the drinking water uh for two thousand twenty four, so that's always good news. And uh look for that in your mailbox.
Okay, thank you, Rob. And now we have a presentation from a representative from Sustainable Westchester. You'll have to introduce yourself.
Sure.
So I'm sorry about that, but um thank you very much for yeah, you can come up to the microphone. Thank you for being here. We work extensively
For the presentation, what's up? Okay.
with Sustainable Westchester, as do many municipalities. And uh there are many, many projects that Sustainable Westchester um is engaged in and and which benefits our community. So I will let you explain all that, but if if you will, you can introduce yourself.
Yeah, of course. Um I did share a slide deck. Um would it be possible to put that up? Just really would help me to kind of, yeah, I shared it with Lauren, yeah.
Lauren. Lauren has it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll put it up on the desk, all right.
Yeah. But I I I I'm happy to just start introducing myself. So I'm Enrique uh Agüero and I work with um our solar department at Sustainable Westchester as a program coordinator. And I plan to just do sort of a broad uh program overview. Um so it's likely that you've already received an overview on some of these programs already, but I'm still gonna go through them briefly. Um just uh bear bear with me.
And 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 just to put this into context for people who don't know, Sustainable Westchester does a review of uh sort of a one-on-one for communities.
Yeah. Yes.
And I know that you've done this um in our community about three times a year, as you do in others. So just so people can understand
Yeah, like sort of what our role is and yeah.
but you want it as sort of an introduction
Yeah.
uh so communities and residents do understand
Yeah, of course, what our program is.
the servicing, right.
Yeah, of course. It's a hefty slide deck with all our programs in there. So it's gonna be packed with information. I hope not too much information, but we'll see. Alrighty. There we go. Here we go. Alright, program overview. We could just jump right into the next slide. So who is Sustainable Westchester? We are a nonprofit organization based in Mount Kisco uh New York, not too far from here. Um and we work, as you mentioned, with the municipalities of Westchester County, forty five municipalities, cities, towns, villages um and the county as well. What is our focus is to deliver environmental and sustainable solutions to the municipalities. So we have different programming in place, which I will talk about, uh that hopefully can set us on track to have, to get closer to a clean energy future, more sustainable future. So we can move on to the next slide. So here's just an overlook of all our programs. Uh I sort of put them into three big buckets of sort of what we've been working on uh for past year and the ones that we've had uh most um I guess of a push-in. So uh renewable energy, we have our Westchester Power Program, which is one of our most impactful programs which the uh town of Newcastle participates in. We have a community solar program, which is uh one of my, like I would say my baby program, the first one I started working at as Sustainable Westchester, I'm in the solar department. And now uh a really exciting program that we are just launching, which is our Solarize Program, which you have heard about before as well from one one of us. Um then we have our building energy programming. So we have uh clean heating and cooling both at the uh commercial and at the residential level. We have two demand response programs, both also at the commercial and at the residential level. And then we've also been trying to expand some of our work uh with uh you know, like innovative technologies and clean energy and also workforce development. So we can move on to the first program here, next slide. So Westchester Power is our longest-running program. It has been around since twenty sixteen and it is known as a community choice aggregation program. And basically, it delivers uh all renewable energy to uh municipalities all throughout um Westchester County. Uh uh right now, we have twenty six municipalities participating in the program. And basically, this uh program delivers uh all renewable energy through your supply to eligible accounts, both uh residential and small business accounts. And essentially, uh we have a few bullet points here that sort of go over the key points about this program. So it is a collective power program, meaning that we purchase the uh the electricity, um which allows us to, and by having sort of the the, you know, the communities opt in, it allows us to essentially purchase and uh get competitive supply contracts for the municipality. So we can get you um that supply at the best uh price point that we can get it. Um we have fixed rates, meaning that during the contract time, you're gonna have, you're gonna have your uh supply rates be sort of the same. Um and then uh community investment. So through the participation in the program, we're able to sort of um expand um and develop more programming, focus on clean energy. So um and then also it works in an opt-out format. So So um and then also it works in an opt-out format. So you always had the utility sort of as the full option. Uh community choice aggregation or our Westchester Power Program gives you an additional option uh to have um a renewable uh an and a a a stable renewable energy option for you to go for, both at a hundred percent and a fifty percent uh renewable option. And uh we also are consumer-friendly, so we try to be available at all times. When you call our office, also it's time you'll talk to a real person. Um so yeah, and then also uh currently, as I said, we have two different supply options, a hundred percent renewable energy option coming from hydro power and fifty percent renewable uh option also coming from um hydro power as well. So that's our community choice aggregation program. Now community solar program, now community solar, how does it work? So uh most people when they think of uh benefiting from uh solar or renewable energy, they think they have to get uh solar on their own roof. They can't benefit that way, but they can also enroll to something called a community solar farm. So basically um you rather than you know getting solar through traditional means, you would enroll to an off-site solar farm. Um specifically your utility account, your Connet account to this farm. And then you would receive an allocation or a portion of that solar farm, depending on your energy appetite or your usage. Um and then that allocation is gonna generate uh credit on a on a month-to-month basis. Um and of that credit, you keep a certain percentage that then gets applied to your monthly bill as a saving. So this is a sort of a this is a free program that people could also participate in and cancel at any time. Um so it's sort of that option for people that you know may potentially have you know could be a renter, they could be a homeowner. Uh but you know they can't get solar for one reason or another. Maybe they have uh heavy tree canopies, they could potentially enroll to um a community solar farm. And as mentioned there in that note in the orange, you don't need to install anything with with community solar. So you can just enroll and take advantage of renewable uh energy savings that way. I should note that community solar um is um one of the most successful um programs right now in clean energy in in New York State. It's actually has already met its goals as far as the New York State uh clean energy goals. So the goal was somewhere around ten um gigawatts of solar and we already reached that in generations. So it's already kind of surpassing that. So that was the goal by twenty thirty and we've already met it, so.
Can I interrupt for a second? What are the requirements for participating in this?
Yeah. So you just have to be paying your own utility bill.
And and there's no monthly fee? There's no monthly fee?
There's no there's no fee attached to it. So community solar is a free program. I would say right now the only bear that we've seen is the availability of these uh uh solar projects. They get to they they tend to fill up really quickly. We haven't actually had an opportunity in the Connet territory unfortunately since I s- I started working at Sustainable Westchester, which was about a year ago. So it's been a while.
So if your utility provider is Con Edison, it's unlikely that you'd be able to enroll in this program?
Not that it so right now you can join our waiting list and what we do is essentially once we do have an opportunity available, we will reach out to you once we do. Um so we recently had some opportunities available in Nice Sector or territory, which we haven't had also in a really long time. So they do come up once in a while. They're just you know um sort of hard to because there's a a pretty high demand for them, right? Cause it's a free program. You could get a a benefit on your bill, so yeah.
And there's no obligation. I I can talk to you offline about that. I I'm just trying to figure out what the what the business model would would be for it.
Of course, yeah, I'm I'm happy to do so.
But um I don't wanna take too much time off.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm a lot of these programs that you know you could spend like an hour probably explaining each each one of them, but I I try to remain brief, but.
Um. Right, right. Well, that it's interesting, okay.
Yeah, no, I mean I would say sort of the main, I guess, to sort of paint the financial picture more, cause most people tend to ask me, so I'm getting a benefit, no cost. Like what's what what's in it for the person that's building these projects? So um New York State actually um has a lot of incentives for the projects that are built that deliver these benefits to folks. So when they build out community solar projects, folks that enroll uh or not folks that enrolled, when they enroll folks to these projects, the projects actually earn additional uh government incentives, both at the federal and state level for building out these projects and delivering benefits to the people that enroll. So that's sort of where that financial picture comes in.
Okay, and there's a limit to the number of people who can enroll in specific in specific projects?
In 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 a certain project, yeah, cause there's only so much capacity that could be allocated to to people.
Right.
Uh any more questions on community solar? Alright, alright, next slide. So and then we have our Solarize Programs. Right now um in early um early this year, twenty twenty five, uh the solar program at Sustainable Westchester has um launched uh three different levels of Solarize. So back in the years between twenty fifteen and twenty uh eighteen, uh we ran a uh Solarize Campaigns all throughout uh Westchester County uh to predominantly focusing on residential solar. Uh now we've launched a um countywide uh campaign where we're working with uh some uh solar developers to essentially um we 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 work with the homeowners at the beginning to provide them free assessments to sort of guide the homeowners. And then we have vetted a group of uh four solar uh installers that are able to provide uh proposals to the customer should they decide to wanna move forward with that. So we're sort of stream streamlining the process for people and making it easier uh for people to sort of get into solar. Uh solar can sometimes be you know it's sort of the potentially the only renewable energy investment that most people will make in their life. So we're trying to make that uh process for them uh much easier. We're also doing that both at the commercial and municipal level. Uh we're currently working with two municipalities right now uh that happen to have um some grants through the clean energy communities. Uh grant uh to sort of make some of their uh clean energy uh uh projects happen. So we're working with both the town of North Salem and the village of Cronin and us and on those uh solar projects. So we essentially support them with you know let's say R F P or even assessing the sites and uh finding solution providers, et cetera. So we're sort of there for them for those sites as well. So should you have any sites that you're interested in exploring solar for, uh we're happy to sort of take a look at those sites and support you accordingly. So yeah. Next slide. Alright, our energy smart homes department. So this is the um essentially the uh electrification, weather station uh department at the residential level. So that first uh bullet point, we're highlighting the that we are a NYSERTA uh regional clean energy hub. So um essentially uh NYSERTA, uh the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority has uh a network of clean energy advisors that work operate all throughout New York State. Uh we happen to be the uh clean energy uh hub for the county of Westchester. So we have energy advisors on staff that could assist homeowners with their um energy needs. So um should they, for example, if they need a home energy audit, uh we have they they can potentially assist homeowners. They have the knowledge and education to sort of be able to assist homeowners to get those upgrades should they need to. Um and we've been doing outreach all over the county, focusing on uh for example D I Y um uh sort of solutions for for homeowners that they can take uh uh they can take home kits to sort of do their own um clean energy upgrades with the homes, such as like simple insulation upgrades and things like that. Um like I said, all the way up to at home energy assessment to see if there's any potential electrification, weather station work that they that homeowners may have to take in. Uh we also support uh homeowners that may not um you know may may be able to afford um you know clean energy uh upgrades through um certain uh programs such as the Empower or uh HEEP program, which are public assistance programs that support uh limited income individuals with uh uh basically improving and making their home more comfortable through that. And we also have similar to the residential program, we have a contractor partner list that we work for um for uh for this program as well. Uh for these uh programs, we actually happen to have an R F P right now out for uh to look for more contractors to work in that um like that HVAC weather station space, uh cause we wanna add a couple more folks to that list. Uh it's on our website and the due date is June thirteenth. So if you know any local contractors that have done a really good job in your home, feel free to send them our way. Uh they could apply on our website. Um you know they could be part of our our list of uh contractors. If you wanna bring in as much local uh labor force uh and 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 uphold it as much as we can. So if you know any local contractors, that would be great um to send our way. Next slide. Uh so we're also doing this at the commercial uh level as well. So we're working with building owners, uh commercial site owners to do energy efficiency studies as well. Um so uh essentially trying to do what we're doing at the residential level, but then also at the commercial level, whether that's uh doing things such as uh conservation, uh energy conservation, electrification, uh clean energy projects, whether that's uh electrifying um the whole facility, uh whether that's you know putting heat pumps, geothermal heating. Uh we also are doing um piloting and and working through um innovative technologies at the commercial decarbonization level uh in um essentially something called a thermal energy network, which is a connect like basically a connection of multiple um geothermal um sites to be able to uh basically share the heat among different uh sites. So that's something that we're working right now with uh small businesses, nonprofits, municipalities, and also large commercial sites to do what we're doing at the residential level, but then also at the uh commercial scale. Uh by the way, I'm like rushing through these slides pretty quickly just cause it there's a lot of information each, but if at any point you do wanna stop me or you uh noted something about one of the uh bullet points, feel free to stop me and I'm happy to.
Yeah, you're doing great. It's a good place.
Yeah. Yeah, alright, next slide. Alright, so here we have our first demand response program.
Yeah.
Uh just to explain what demand response is, is essentially um a program uh created to basically uh lower the use of uh polluting power plants. So uh peaker plants. Uh these have to be turned on unfortunately all through uh 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 year when they are um high uh impacts and uh a lot of strain on the energy grid. Essentially uh during the summertime, we're sort of uh turning all all those are turning on our ACs cause it's getting really warm. Uh we have to turn on our um we have to unfortunately turn on these peaker plants. So we have a program called Grid Rewards, which is a free app that you can download on your phone. Um and the app will essentially notify you these times during the year to um essentially lower your usage. You follow through with it, you earn a small rebate at the end of the year and that's sort of like um will build up. Uh homeowners on average are earning anywhere between like one hundred and two hundred dollars at the end of the year. So it's a nice little bonus that you're getting for complying and lowering your usage, while you also get to feel good about um not having to contribute towards turning on those uh um polluting peaker plants. Um so yeah, next slide. And then we also have this at the uh commercial level as well. So it's the same principle of uh essentially lowering the usage um to uh lower the stress on the grid uh at the commercial level. Um and uh we do actually have uh one um maybe um we 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 saw a big um lower this in or a case study of this in uh New Rochelle uh with their school district. Uh they actually enrolled in the SmartKid AI program, which is our uh demand response program at the commercial level. Um they earned seventy thousand dollars that year. We're following through with uh SmartKid AI. Obviously uh school districts during the summertime, um they don't have they they don't have as much usage cause there's not as many students, right? Except for maybe summer school. So they got to earn uh a hefty amount during um the year because they lowered their usage and followed through um uh the past year. So yeah.
We will let our school districts know.
Yeah, of course. Feel free like if if you know if you wanna connect us with your school district, we would be happy to start that conversation. We wanna get more of them on board. Cause it's it's really like easy money, right? Like at the summer, at the summertime, there's not as many students. You can afford to turn off a few lights and unplug a couple things during the summer. That could be big time money that could be used towards other efforts for the schools, you know. Could be um maybe more funding for their sports teams or um any school events that they may have, so yeah.
Can I ask you, is anything other than an app and enrolling, is there anything to be installed on the property itself?
There isn't anything to be installed. Um the only so we are in the Connet and territories so there there's essentially we already have something called a smart meter, which allows uh demand response to occur. So I'm pretty sure the sites would potentially have that. There there does have to be sort of an analysis that has to be done for larger commercial sites. Um so the company that we work for called Logical Buildings, they would do uh basically a free assessment. They will look at the uh site that you would like would like to enroll and determine whether um it could be eligible to potentially participate in SmartKid AI. But it's not it it it's not like there's any investment involved. It's just sort of following through with it um and and getting that assessment done with the company. So yeah. Happy to definitely, if you know of any sites, um I'm I'm happy to connect you um for sure with our um decarbonization team. So yeah. And then um for we we've already done two of these. So we did one last fall and then we did one um in the spring. Um so these are clean energy and resource fairs. Uh the first one was done at Pace University in White Plains, uh Pace Law School. And then uh our last one was done at the county center. And we basically are offering um we we are connecting uh individuals with uh folks in the clean energy industry. So we had different um industry partners all from uh folks working in solar, but then also other nonprofits. Um we had um unions, we had all kinds of different folks working in the clean energy industry to provide resources. We also had panels as well, so people could also learn about how to get in involved in the clean energy industry. So we are really excited to um have our next one coming up here in June eighteenth. So if you also know any vendors that could poten- potentially participate, or if you know of anyone that would be interested in getting into the energy industry or learning more, you should definitely try to attend. Um so yeah, next slide. And then here's uh one of our innovative projects that we have actually here. So that's the our office or I would say uh of that building, a tenth of that is actually our office. But that's the that's the village uh like the village and town courts building and 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 police precinct. But uh part of that is is ours as well. And uh on that roof, we have uh our Sunshine two E V uh pilot. Uh well, not a pilot anymore. It's actually out there um already um producing power for us. But uh it was the first in the state and it basically is a model that um has uh ninety kilowatts of solar on the roof that generate energy that feed directly to a small tiny box that you may see to the uh right of that building. That's an energy storage system that feeds directly into two level uh two fast charge uh level two chargers. So that's sort of uh a model where you're sort of getting energy that directly feeds into chargers that goes through. It's actually getting clean energy directly fed onto your clean um uh vehicle, your electric vehicle. Um what's cool too about this um project as well is that it uh has a double purpose. As a community solar project, so we enrolled folks around um the uh around the municipality uh Mount Kisco um in that community solar project. So we have around forty uh uh actually low-income individuals that are uh enrolled in that program and saving through that. Um I should note that this is this did not cost the uh village or the town anything at all. The uh the solution provider basically covers the whole um cost of the um installation. So we're happy to look at any sites as well that you think could be great for uh this pilot as well. So yeah, next slide. And then I wanted to also highlight uh what Newcastle's impact has been through our programming. Obviously, this is limited to only two programs, but I'm sure this has been more widespread throughout all our programs. Just happened to quickly be able to get statistics on these two. But through uh Westchester Power Community Choice Aggregation, we have around thirty-four people um or thirty-four residents and small business accounts enrolled in the program that have odds offset um the year twenty twenty four twenty twenty thousand four hundred and eighty-seven metric tons of C O two is equivalent to almost taking off five thousand gas-powered uh vehicles off the road. So you've definitely done your fair share through your participation in in the community uh in the community choice aggregation program. We really thank you for that. And through solar uh as well, looking at the uh uh New York Sun um data, we saw that you guys have uh since the year two thousand three installed three hundred and thirty systems um in uh both both at the residential and commercial level for solar, which have accounted for three point nine megawatts C C of solar generation. So that's a pretty hefty amount of generation as well that you uh contributed to towards the county's generation. So we thank you for that as well. Um and next slide. So I also wanted to bring up about ways that we can potentially work with the town. So one of those being a grid rewards or demand response campaign. I should note that um grid rewards or the demand response uh app has a specific deadline until you can basically sign up for that program. That unfortunately has already passed. But that being said, we could always plan a campaign for the next line uh for the for the next deadline next year uh to potentially you know get the marketing, going to get people within uh Newcastle excited about the program. Uh so we can get folks enrolled so they can um take advantage and and play an impact in demand response. We could also do uh energy smart homes and Solarize campaign to promote those programs as well. Like I said, we just launched a residential Solarize program. So we're coming up with cool marketing uh stuff that that could be shared around the um municipality for folks to know about the assistance that we're providing for folks that are interested in getting solar. And then we also have the services available that I mentioned, the SmartKid AI, the commercial demand response, uh the Sunshine two E V pilot, commercial decarbonization. and then also uh the energy options that I didn't explain uh that actually. But uh so that's basically being able to uh get um businesses in larger commercial sites to actually purchase their own energy. So for them to actually get commercial sites. So that's also uh a program that we're sort of um get starts getting started to work on. Um but yeah, so that's I think that's all. Yeah. Alright, a lot of information. Uh now I'm gonna open it. I guess if there's any questions or comments, uh there are my con- there's my contact information there as well. I'm happy I have some cards as well and I'm happy to distribute. Um should you um want me to do any presentations or connect you with uh the departments um for any of the programs that I talked about today. Like I said, my my specialization is solar, so solar question shoot on my way. Some of them, some some of the programs, I'll try my best, but you know, I'm happy to take them down and connect you with the rightful departments. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much for being with us and going through all of these programs. Uh our residents mostly wanna know about our renew the renewable energy program because that's what they see on their bill.
Yep. Sure.
It's our default uh energy system as it is for many municipalities participating municipalities.
Yep.
So we usually get questions about that.
Of course.
And um you know, we have people from our from our community who are part of our our Sustainability Advisory Board, someone who are here
Yep.
who who are able to explain it very well. But if you have any um literature or materials that you think are helpful for us to use to to send to people that way.
Of course, of course. Yeah, I mean, we're always come.
No, like a cheat sheet, so.
Yeah, yeah, we're always coming up with marketing and different ways kind of like, you know, sort of like a compact handout that can be shared or distributed or made available to uh your constituents. That way they could um you know, sort of be able to understand the program a lot better. Um yeah, so that's definitely something that we could come up with and.
Right, and just to stress again, it is an opt out. It's it's an opt out program.
Yes. Yes, so you can.
But it's it's very easy to opt out.
Correct. Yes, you can go there on our website. You can call us. Uh um yeah, you could, yeah. So it's a pretty, pretty easy way to do it.
All the information, yeah.
Um when we do roll out the program at the beginning, um there is usually around a mo- a month gap and you receive a mailer. You can do that that way at the beginning. Uh but then after that uh month passes, you do that through our website or and inform. That's usually pretty pretty simple to do.
Okay. Alright, and does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. That was nice.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, thank you. Um now hang on, do you wanna stick around a bit? Because we have our, well, you you don't have to stay at the microphone, but we have our public comment period coming up.
Yep.
It's possible that someone might have a question.
Of course.
Um and we have reached the public comment period. Uh anyone with a public comment, please come up to the microphone, identify yourself and uh where you live.
Uh hello, I'm Laura Lenehan. I'm a longtime resident of Chappaqua.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you. Um I have a question. Am I allowed to ask questions?
Well, normally this is not a Q and A that we can tell people that um.
Okay. Okay, so I'll make.
But let's, you know, go ahead.
I'll 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 try to make statements rather than ask questions.
Okay.
Um I realized I started with a question, but.
You did.
But but that's okay. In any case, I I wanna say um how um wonderful it is to hear that. Um after four years of education about the ban on the gas powered leaf blowers, um it it's been recognized that they're still in widespread use and so some enforcement is is necessary. So I I greatly appreciate it. I know that others here do as well um as well as some who may be um participating uh via uh Zoom. Um I just wanted to comment on the success of the educational uh campaign. Um at the uh Earth Day event at Gedney Park, the Sustainability Advisory Board um surveyed uh twenty nine residents and uh twenty eight of them, ninety seven percent, were aware of the ban. Um and I canvassed my uh neighborhood last Friday, which is Kip Street and Pond Hill Road. I uh knocked on thirty eight doors, um twenty five opened and twenty four of twenty five knew about the ban. One person knew about it and opposes it. Um and one person um didn't know about it, but when I explained it to him, he said, I will tell my landscaper. And twenty four out of twenty five said that they support enforcement. So that's uh again, not ninety six percent. So I I think that's pretty good um evidence that uh people know about the ban. And I'm have no doubt that landscapers know about the ban as well. Um the people who are operating the leaf blowers may not know, but the people who are um in charge. So um uh a couple of comments. Chief Carroll, is that right? Yes. I didn't understand exactly what the relationship is between the police issuing a summons and someone reporting to the police. Um it sounded to me as though the person who calls the police and says there's a violation going on is um expected to participate in um the enforcement in in some way.
Yes, no.
Yeah, yes, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
So they're not required to. The officer witnesses the violation himself. He can he can issue the summons. If he doesn't witness the violation, he cannot issue the summons. It would be the person who's reporting it would have to provide information that they witnessed it and swear to it.
And and it will be clear to us what is required to.
Reports. They would come in and we would take a statement from them, basically.
A statement. So we don't need photographs and I'm sorry, that's a question. Okay. Um and as I understand it, then the police will be conducting surveillance.
Uh not surveillance, we would be responding to a complaint. So yeah, we're gonna drive up.
So you're not gonna you're not gonna drive around town looking for viola- I'm sorry, it's a question.
You know.
I would I would hope that you would drive around town looking for violators. I mean, I I think that this is a comment. I I think that um it's difficult to achieve sufficient scale of enforcement. So with regard to the um report from the um head of the Buildings Department, um I I may have been responsible for um I didn't report any to the police. I reported them all to the Building Department last summer. And uh you know, no sense of where that goes, that that leads to any kind of enforcement. And if I reported fifteen and one person reported one, um that's minuscule compared to the number of violations going on. And I was somewhat systematic in that I was prepared to take pictures of the landscaping truck, the license plate, the leaf blower, the operator um and the uh mailbox of 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 the homeowner. Um you know, my daily constitutional, walking around different neighborhoods and sixteen, that's nothing. And that's all the reports you got. So I am making the statement, there needs to be some kind of surveillance. Is the building dep- is a question. Building department shall do it, the police shall do it, or or both. The the notion that you're gonna get hundreds of reports on the hundreds of users through people reporting on their neighbors, uh I would um submit is unrealistic. Um then also uh with regard to the um fine being on the homeowner, it's unclear to me if the first step is a warning or direct to a fine. Um and then it's also not clear to me if this is starting on Sunday, June first.
Well, okay, so it's not a Q and A, but this is important information. Uh this is starting as of now. We don't need a local law. The law is in place. Um previous boards and this board last year did instruct or let the our police department know that our wishes were more towards education and warnings, but now we're letting them know that enforcement is uh is the next step. And so the law is in place and um and it will be applied when it's in effect, which is June one.
Okay.
It is in fact in effect, so.
Okay, so I'll come back to comment on another topic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh I'm Sid Fine Hirsch. Um I know some of you. Um I'm really here to let you know that there's a new organization in town and we're taking advantage of the fact that traffic safety was on the agenda to announce it. It's the Summers Town Road uh Safe uh Network. And it includes both uh Newcastle and parts of Osning, which border uh one thirty three. I understand it's a state road. Uh but our purpose, uh multiple purposes and part of it, of course, is to uh get that road fixed cuz it's it's in really very bad uh not just the sur- uh the surface, but the side, the water, everything about that road is decrepit. And we do want that to fix. Like uh Chief Carroll helped me get Vales Lane paved one time and I do appreciate appreciate that. That was thirty five years without paving. My specific thing is I'd like to actually spread the the discussion beyond just the drivers. Uh there's a real problem in the United States about pedestrian safety. Uh there's a huge increase. I have something maybe I could distribute. The United States is the only country, or the United States and Little Switzerland, which is having a huge increase in pedestrian accidents and deaths and injuries. Our town is not immune to that. If I understand uh from what I I know, there were three uh trash collectors in Newcastle who were injured last year because while they were actually doing their job uh and it was sent to the hospital. There's been a uh a town worker in in Cortland who in Cortland who was killed. Uh it was attributed to uh a driver, an older driver who lost control of his car. But it's still, if you look at that road, that low road was made for speeding. And that's a problem with a lot of our roads. By the way, there are pedestrian um efforts going on right now in uh Mount Kisco. I spoke to the mayor there. They actually hired a consulting company, I think for about seventy five thousand dollars, helping improve in in um uh pedestrian safety. Our concern, of course, is 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 uh Summers Town Road. And please don't leave out um the Lower West End from considerations. By the way, I consider Vales Lane to be a collector uh road, okay? So you might want, please, I'd love to see you include that in your survey. Um but the real question about that I have about Summers Town Road is it's a dangerous road to walk on. It's not only dangerous to drivers, and there have been a number of, of course, there's a huge number of accidents on that road. Um and uh Chief Carroll has put, you know, uh uh speed indicators for drivers and it does have an effect. But if you, there are a number of people who use that road for pedestrian walking. And one of the things that road does is it cuts off our communities. If I want to go over to um you know, a road across from uh on uh Summers Town Road, I have to go through a whole set of traffic that is dangerous to be in. Or to walk along the side of the road is dangerous to be in. There is some pathways that stop just about at uh uh at Vales Lane and coming up from one hundred, but at that point, they just disappear. We need better controls there. We need ability to for our community on the south side of the north side of Summers Town Road to reach those communities on the left side. They're part of our neighborhood. Yet we can't reach them. We can't walk to them. Uh Vales Lane itself, by the way, is an attractive uh street to walk on. It has a uh nineteenth century farmhouse. It has a very new cottage on it that's very cute. It has a stone house. And so a lot of people from the entire neighborhood come to our street to walk on, walk their dogs, huge number of dogs walking on our street. And that street does have some amount of speeding because it's a fairly wide street and it's largely a straight street and it is a collector street. So all the residents around that area come and use that street to get to. And if they're late for school, late for a job, have to get home to pick up the kids, they're likely gonna be speeding. So uh.
Can I just uh clarify something? So Summers Town Road, so people know, is Route one thirty three off of Route one hundred?
Yeah. True.
It's if you're running, if you're going towards Barcliff, it's after the Teconic.
Runs from. Correct.
Um on ramps and exits and and it's one thirty three. Uh so it's a state road.
Huh. Yeah. It's one. It's a state road, actually.
Coming off another.
Yeah, it it runs long one one hundred for a short distance and then goes to Osning.
State road, right. Right.
So it's the main road from uh um Millwood to Osning.
And it's extremely curvy and the hill is extremely steep and it is a state road.
Correct. And that's one reason why there are so many accidents on it is also speeding.
Right.
I have personally, I have a small radar device. I have clocked people on that road. It's a thirty five mile an hour speed limit. But it's not unusual to see people doing fifty five or more on that road, especially when there is at night, when there's a lot uh light traffic. It's it is a very dangerous road. It's particularly dangerous for anybody who's a pedestrian. Okay? And um it is a state road. By the way, at our first meeting of the uh the Summers Town Roads uh Safe Network, um Chris Burdock was at it and uh Pete Harkum has also uh asked to attend our next meeting. So we we are plugged in, we're trying to get plugged into the state knowing it's a state road, but we do need your support to get, you know, some safety features. I would particularly like to see some crosswalks and pedestrian, maybe pedestrian activated uh lights so that we could cross from Vales Lane over to um uh you know, Barnes Road. Uh so that would and that would be a tremendous slowing of the traffic. That speeding would would really be reduced if we had some type of traffic control on that road. The the town does patrol the road. In fact, we we I often see them uh patrol car parked on Vales Lane looking for speeders. But of course, it cannot cover all the speeding that's going on in that road. So I I'm here to let you know that we we exist now. Uh we're we're going to be active. Uh we're probably gonna be talking to you some more in the future. Uh but we need some your help to really invest in safety, not for for drivers. I I would please ask you not to s- look at traffic safety as a driver centric problem. It is not a dri- the drivers don't totally own the roads. pedestrians have a uh uh a possession of the roads. Bicyclists have a possession of that road. It doesn't exclusively or belong to drivers. The point of traffic safety is not simply to get a driver to that destination as fast as possible. Uh and a lot of our roads, especially in in our older roads, have been designed with that kind of concept in mind. So look at the roads, at the safety and expand the the uh uh idea to include both bicyclists and pedestrians.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um I just wanna clarify for everyone that our um traffic study and reduction of traffic um limits is not for driver convenience. It is a pedestrian safety measure to slow people down so that pedestrians don't get hurt and so drivers don't get into an accident. So it is very uh pedestrian focused as well. Um okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Good evening, everyone. Uh my name is Jim Pinto. I live, excuse me, on Forty One Edgewood Road and I'm one of the three founders of the Summers Town Action Network uh that we had a meeting on April seventeenth that was referred to. Um I reached out back in October to the D O T about Summers Town Road and the conditions that are fall- that is falling apart. And to that end, we got a lot of input at our meeting at the firehouse on the seventeenth of April about the about pedestrian safety, about the shoulders, about the conditions that are uh for drainage is falling apart and the road is just a bumpy nightmare. And to that end, I did speak to um the Region Eight Engineer. I'm an engineer myself uh up at the D O T about the conditions back in October. Sent some communications, had a conversation with them that they sent out their local foreman to look at the road conditions. And they exceeded uh the six hundred feet that I was concerned about, which is on that curvy part that you had mentioned. Uh this actually became a seven thousand foot, according to the inspection they did, of roadwork that needed to be re rebuilt or reconditioned. They were gonna attempt to do it over the winter if the conditions had allowed as an emergency project. That did not happen. The winter was difficult, as we all know. Uh so I kept in communications with them and they assured me that by the spring, they would be looking at other options for the road, which they're starting to do. However, we, our group got together over fifty families and we had our meeting, both in Osning and in Newcastle, to talk about the things that should happen and pedestrian safety was on the high end of the list. But the road needs more than just being resurfaced. It needs to be uh the inclusion of shoulders and drainage. Uh when delivery trucks stop at any of the homes along that road, they're blocking traffic, so it creates an. Uh when delivery trucks stop at any of the homes along that road, they're blocking traffic, so it creates another traffic problem. So there are a myriad of issues that need to be addressed. And I'm in constant communication, as I said, with DOT about this. We did have our representatives there as well. Uh so we are gonna pursue this uh further. We do have a website. Oh, I should say a Google webpage. Excuse me, I've got that wrong. And uh we are taking in more comments. Uh we're also uh partnering with a petition in Austin that's trying to do the same thing, get the road repaired. Uh so we have a lot going on and we do need the support of the administration as well. Uh primarily because I look at this, four years ago, the DOT paved right up to to Chico's, one thirty-three. So once you continue across the road and you go on to the remaining mile and a half approximately on in Newcastle, not only to not to mention the remaining three uh two mile and a half down in Austin, road is in a deplorable state. A lot of people avoid it, go through local neighborhoods. These are the things that are going regardless and people are definitely uh very nervous about getting stuck on the road, having to walk along the shoulder, those sort of things that uh did happen on the first uh about two thousand feet of that road when it was rebuilt a few years back. So we are trying to uh ramp up the effort. We do know that the state did send more money down for road repaired to Westchester. Obviously, we got some of it, I think, for possibly to our roads, as you mentioned earlier in the meeting. But we are, we're trying to get the state to support additional work for redesigning and getting this road straightened out once and for all. That's what I have to say. Uh we would definitely would like you to come, one of you to come or all of you to come to our next meeting, which will be sometime in the next two months or so. And here the concerns and appreciate the fact that uh that's also a part of Newcastle that we feel needs to be improved. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um at this point, I'd like to ask anyone who um has a public comment for Sustainable Westchester. So this gentleman here can get home. Uh sorry, I should have asked that before, but is this a?
Hi. Well, the first part is, so so Kent Thomas, co-chair of the Sustainability Advisory Board.
Oh.
So Sustainable Westchester, you were talking about community solar. And when Jeremy was acting supervisor back in twenty twenty-one, uh the S A B brought a program, the Sustainable Westchester is doing, for municipal community solar. So it's it's municipal, it's town accounts and enrolling them into the pro- this program. And what it was is it gives a discount of ten percent. And they they, the program sort of stopped. They they didn't have enough capacity to continue with the program. But we did enroll part of some of our accounts on this and to date, we've saved forty thousand dollars from that program. So but thanks to Sustainable Westchester, you know, creating the program. So that's it.
Very good.
Excellent.
Okay, I have other comments, but does anybody else have or do you want, you brought them to me?
Yeah, well, hang on there, Kent. Does anyone else have any comments that might uh that might uh relate to Sustainable Westchester? Okay.
My quick question is, is it?
Uh you have to come up to the microphone, please.
Okay. I'm shy, but I'll come. Okay, are any of the municipal buildings, schools, whatnot in any part of the program? Because we do a lot of uh energy consumption, I would imagine.
Um we cannot speak to schools. Uh the the schools are not part of our jurisdiction, so I I don't know, but um I do, I do kind of.
That's a separate entity, okay. But how about the building like the, like this building as a, for instance?
Yeah, um I am not aware of that.
But I think it's something to pursue, possibly, some suggestion.
Right.
Good idea.
Yeah, we are, we are pursuing making changes to the building, so um that would definitely be part of it.
Alright, I happen to do my my master's thesis on energy conservation, by the way.
We have a lot of expertise. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
So I do appreciate, but the the presentation is very good.
Thank you very much.
We're we're in the process of installing solar panels on the chat pack right now.
On chat pack, that's right, yeah.
So the materials have arrived.
Terrific.
That that's correct, yeah. Okay, anyone else for Sustainable Westchester and we can let? Okay, uh we we have someone online, uh June Boyle.
Yes, hi. Um I don't have a question for Sustainable Westchester. I have comments on some of the others she raised.
Yes, hi.
Okay, so we, someone pointed to you thinking that you did both, so we'll get to you. Uh just hold on, hold on a few minutes. Um okay, I think um thank you for being here. You can, you're free to go. We don't wanna hold you up all night. Thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Uh okay, so we're we're taking all the comments um in person first and then we'll go to online comments. So Kent, you wanna come up and continue?
Okay. I do. Yes, I do. Thank you. Um so I just wanted to correct so something that Tom had said, which was as far as the number of municipalities that have gas leaf- leaf blower laws in effect. So actually, there are only eight that don't have leaf blower laws at this point. There are thirty-two that do have. It actually doesn't quite add up. There's forty-three municipalities. But anyway, it's close. There are thirty-two that have a law and there are five that were there banned year round. So no use of it whatsoever. So actually, I I have, I don't really have so much comments as I do some questions and and so they're basically about the enforcement by the building department and how that is going to be done and what is the expectation, the amount of time that they'll be spent doing this proactively? And how will that go about? Will they be about, you know, uh driving through neighborhoods or doing anything like that? Or is only when they're out on their inspections, et cetera, will they be doing it? So kind of what's the mechanism and how does that all work? Cause I don't think that was really, um you know, we really got the details of of that. Okay. And then I I also wanted to have a little bit of understanding about the the depositions. And do the depositions only apply or what do they apply to? Do they apply to complaints that are are lodged by phone and by both to the police department and the building department or just one or the other? And do they apply to those complaints that are sent in by email?
So I could speak for sure for the police department, of course.
Okay.
So I think, I don't think we've worked through the building department.
Okay, so so the police department, so.
But I'm not gonna object to if somebody wanted to report it to the police department and come in, but it has to be done in person. So you can report it by email, but you you need the deposition and evidence in person.
Okay.
And then you would have to go to court for that to be prosecuted.
Okay, so whether whether they report it or not, they can come in and do a deposition?
Gonna have to be, it has to be in person, yes.
Okay, so that's in person, that's fine. And it could be for either, and they kind of already reported it through one of these other mechanisms. Alright, okay, thanks.
Okay, anyone else for public comment? Okay, please come up.
Good evening, Kathy Schreiber, twenty-nine year resident. I'm also a member of the Sustainability Advisory Board. And I had also worked on the leaf blower law that was implemented June first, or start in June first, twenty twenty-one. So I wanted to, I think, uh my associate Kent or my co-chair said about the towns, there's this handout that um we that I think it was Bedford twenty thirty is put together. So I just wanted um to be able to provide that to you all so that if you needed it as reference, it's also online, but I thought it would be nice to have the hard copy. And then I just had a statement that um thank you all for considering the compliance portion. I really appreciate it. We all appreciate it. Um the only concern I might raise is that uh it is effective June first and will there normal, a lot of times the S A B helps with the education, but I wanna make sure that the town is going to be responsible for communicating that fines may be enforced. Um it sounded like effective immediately. So I wanna make sure that there is that communication to the community so that there are no surprises and that it triggers, you know, unnecessary stress and anger. Is it? Thanks.
Thank you. Greetings, Victoria Alzepi, sixty-five Seventh Bridges Road, um I guess I went here two thousand eight. And I'm the chair of the Conservation Board. And um I guess first of all, I really wanna say thank you. Thank you so much, Rob. Thank you so much, Chief. And I actually ran out to thank Tom earlier. This is huge, uh frankly, from my perspective, from the Conservation Board angle, perspective on the importance of enforcing this law. Because we all know the leaf blowers have huge environmental implications and issues of public health and climate change and all of that. So um it's great to see that you're all collaborating to make this happen and that the board is supportive of that. Um so just to build on on a couple of things that were said. So you know, part of any law being enforced and uh the impact it has on making on kind of on compliance, uh the deterrent effect is really key. So um and I'm glad you spoke with Scarsdale, cause they have probably the most success around the enforcement piece. They've had the law in effect for a long time. So I'm just sitting here thinking, what can we do to, you know, get our best bang for the buck in terms of like, if we're announcing this and to what Kathy was just saying, if there is a way into a lot of blasting out right now, um that there is a change of perspective, that the town is going to actively enforce the law um and that there will be some, you know, not sound threatening, but to kind of say this is an important law, we we, you know, town board passed this. It has huge implications for the public health and safety of the community and therefore we're gonna be enforcing it. So if that can get out in the e-newsletter, um you know, all any any venue, like, you know, on the on the triangle, at the Millwood Plaza, on the all of the boards, you know, um that we all drive by to really make sure that people know that starting June first, perfect timing, obviously, that you're focusing on this. And then to do whatever we can um to make that real. So if people know that there's gonna be more attention paid, um and that there will be summonses issued if necessary. I'm I'm really, I'm looking at you, Chief Carol, because I'm thinking um it's very tricky for one resident to report another resident. We all know that around any issue, right? People wanna have good relationships with their neighbors. So uh some people like, you know, brave Laura who's who's done that and she's, you know, this is a important issue for her and great that she does that, but a lot of people won't do that. So I'm thinking to myself, you know, if there's any way that there can be proactive, um again, not to have like these Gestapo, you know, patrols, but somehow to, you know, I know that the police cars often kind of go around looking and we see them stopping for speeding issues, et cetera, which is important. If there's any way to strategically come up with some kind of protocol over the next, you know, starting on June first for the next couple of months, where really the the community gets a sense that the eyes and ears are out there because this is so important. And you know, I don't know how you can do that exactly. I just wanna put it on the radar to be thoughtful about that. Because I think if people see that, you know, that it's not, yes, yes, residents can report and that's important and we should encourage, encourage. I don't, I don't even love the word report, but if there's some way we could say, you know, communicate um that there's an issue. I don't know how we can use the semantics to make people actually do it. But if there is a way that the police, the, you know, can do something proactive. Um again, I'm not exactly sure what that looks like, but I think it will build legitimacy and credibility um and kind of show that this it's really real and and kind of walking the talk around it um for the first couple of months especially. Um and maybe, I don't know if we can use the farmer's market. You know, I'm just thinking like where do residents go and learn and hear about things? Facebook, I mean, if comes, if we have something in writing on on Facebook that the town puts out for the police department, um we can circulate it around Facebook to build awareness. And again, the more awareness we build, the more deterrent effect it will have and hopefully no one will ever need to get a summons if if everyone knows what they need to be doing, so. Thank you. If you wanna talk about it offline, I'd be to shout out that, but thank you all.
Thank you, Victoria. I um I I just want to reflect on on this issue. Maybe it's my legal background, but I've seen that um the law has been communicated for four years. We've just heard how effective that communication has been. I don't know of any law where people have to be warned that it would be enforced. So I I understand um what you're saying because it hasn't been. I get that, but I'm a little a little taken aback by that because in my mind, the warning has been out for four years. So I don't know what to make of um of this point, other than that we would be telling the same story, but saying we really mean it this time. So um I I do get the point, though we will. But I, again, I just do wanna stress that the education has been very successful and people do know um about the law.
Yeah. Okay.
Um Victoria, you'd like to come up again? Okay, just quickly, yeah.
So I hear what you're saying and I just wanna say, my sense is that people in the community know that it's not enforced. And I've started to talk with a lot of other towns and the only thing that makes people act is when it's enforced. So I do think this is a pivotal moment, that this will be different if we announce to the community that the law is passed and that we really wanna make sure that it is now enforced. Because I think unfortunately, I hear what you're saying, the education has been great, but it doesn't mean that it's caused compliance. So I think we can, there's a moment of opportunity here with this shift, and it is a shift. It's a cultural shift, it's a mindset shift, sociological level. I do think it's more to say, this is what's changing. Be aware that there's gonna be more, you know, focus on enforcement. And I think it's fair to tell the residents that because they should know that and I think it will be a deterrent to.
We we will and at the risk of a.
I think it's, I think it's fair. I have, I I've told my, you know, my guy not to not to blow. Inevitably, it gets gets blown. It is what it is. But I think if I get a fine, you better believe he's gonna hear. I get another fine, he's done.
Right. Mm-hmm.
And to Tom's, to Paul's point earlier, the residents that the building department received complaints and notices went out and there was no repeat offenders. So deterrence.
Mm-hmm. In case of. Yeah. Okay, good.
And um just not to be misunderstood, I do agree that we need to communicate this to to residents. I just don't think there needs to be a whole other educational campaign about of being enforced.
Oh, no. Oh, well.
So we we will, yeah, of course, we will.
Yeah, I mean, I know there's been so much education, yeah. I'm just thinking, again, the enforcement, I think the education around that particular piece, I think, will go along with it, please.
Yeah. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Uh let, um we'll let anyone who wants to come up or has not come up yet. Anyone else would like to come up for a public comment who has not spoken yet? No? Okay.
Jennifer Mavis Flag, um Hilltop Drive. I just want to make the point that if we're relying on depositions and not the building department or the police department going out and looking for violations, then we're not gonna get a whole lot of enforcement and that's my concern. So if we don't have anyone else looking beside the residents, we're not gonna get a lot of enforcement.
Okay, thank you. Um anyone online for public comment? I see uh June Boyle.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all for addressing this issue. Um I appreciate all the perspectives that were shared.
Thank you all for addressing this issue.
Um one of the things uh I haven't heard, and I know this was probably done as part of the early education, uh but in terms of educating our local landscaping businesses, they are local businesses, they have, some of them are trying to change their models They are local businesses, they have. uh so that they can make, remain profitable. Others disregard when uh it seems to suit them. I had to argue with my guy the other day um because I said absolutely no blowers on my property, period. And uh someone on the team showed up with a gas powered thing blowing, blowing just on my heart rate, but I said I didn't want it on the property. So I think there is, there is some uh um need to also alert Just on my heart rate, but I said I didn't want it on the property. So I think there's, there's some uh um need to also alert local businesses that this is going in force as well in terms of um the the actual um enforcement of these rules. businesses that this is going in force as well in terms of um the the actual um enforcement of these rules. So I don't know how to go about doing that, but I wanted to raise that as an important process to engage them.
So I don't know if I'm gonna do that, but I wanted to raise that as an important process to engage them. They have, some of them are trying, some of them are not.
Can we, can we make some effort to do that? Um the other point I wanted to make was um, you know, there does seem to be a some concern about whether you know, there does seem to be a some concern about whether um the police department and the um uh building department have the capacity to um be able to out and do this kind of surveillance. And so is there possibility of getting a small working group together to explore what the feasibility of this is And so there. To explore what the feasibility of this is um and whether the current, the current ordinance structure is realistic and maybe there might be modifications structure is realistic and maybe there might be modifications um to improve both compliance and enforcement and enforcement, uh so that residents get quiet and healthy neighbors. They need the businesses, um uh you know, they need some viable operations and they can accommodate that neighbors, they need the businesses, um uh you know, they need some viable operations and they can accommodate that and that the town government can actually enforce the rules. and that the town government can actually enforce the rules. So just wanted to make that point, but thank you for uh for addressing this important issue.
So I just wanted to make that point, but thank you for for addressing this important issue.
Okay, thank you. Alright, anyone else for public comment?
Uh Laurel Lenahan, town resident. Three topics, but I'll be brief. Returning to what we've just been discussing and the success of education, there's been no education that the homeowner is going to be fined. That's a big change. So um to uh Victoria's point about alerting people, I think you'll have a lot of surprise with regard to the fact that there were sixteen reports and no. I think you'll have a lot of surprise, with regard to the fact that there were sixteen reports and no repeat offenders just means that nobody's looking. It doesn't tell you anything about whether there was.
Means that the sixteen people that received notices that they had violated maybe didn't do it again, maybe they took it seriously.
We don't know. I I wasn't out there re- repeatedly going through the same neighborhoods, so uh just just saying.
I hope not.
Um and I agree with the notion that, I already stated this, that if you're gonna rely on um citizen reporting. Uh it's gonna be inadequate. Um the second thing I wanted to comment on is the traffic safety question. Um don't remember how long ago it was, fifteen years ago perhaps. I um got um my neighbors on Kip Street to sign a petition to lower the speed limit from thirty to twenty five. And this was successful with no impact on the speeds of the drivers. And um I'm sure everybody knows Kip, because it's always used as a detour. Um and it's it's narrow and it's windy and um big truck speed and small car speed. And lots of people like to walk their dogs. So in the course of my canvassing my neighbors, four of them um said, hey, um how about we get together and petition the town for speed bumps? So um I'm not gonna ask, are you considering speed bumps? I'm saying I think that that should be an option, um if neighborhoods are asking for it. I don't know whether that also comes under um the uh state uh regulation. Or whether that's up to uh the town governing its its own um streets. Um if it were put out there, I bet you'd have a lot of neighborhoods that would ask for speed bumps. And then the final thing is um with regard to solarize and the fact that it applies to municipalities. Um I'm hoping that the town is proceeding with um planning a um solar canopy, a raise in the municipal lots, in in particular the train station lot. Um and taking advantage of the uh the solarize. I I've addressed this before.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Okay, thanks, we have one more in person.
Carrie Basic. Oh, in person, thank you. Carrie Basic uh completely and appropriately dressed uh for this meeting, but um sorry.
Yes. You have time, Carol.
I just wanted to point out that not only do landscapers do leaf blowers, but also the uh roofers have done that. I've had that in my own house and also the gutter cleaners. So it's not only landscapers, there also, I'm just pointing this out to you in case you think about this in a low way. Because I know in my case that was, they just blew, 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 and I'm pretty sure they were gas powered. And as ours for uh road safety too, I would say, I know I've thought right in front of this building by the library, this coming down that road. I've seen so many people at a place where there's children and people and something also to think about, because it is very fast. I've had it, happened many times in town. And uh I know the police actually stopped someone and ticketed them when my children were trick or treating years ago, so I was grateful for that. Um but the other day I know that there was a big story about how a car swerved around people waiting for ducks and they plowed down a bunch of baby ducklings. So it's definitely something to think about, how to get people to slow down, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing uh none, we will close the public comment period. Thank you everyone for your very thoughtful comments tonight. Okay. Let's see where we are now. Rob, would you like to go over the consent agenda, please?
Uh we have.
Uh hold on, hold on a second. Alright, if anyone wants to talk, please go outside to talk. Okay, thank you. Okay, Rob, let's go through the consent agenda.
Uh we have the adoption of monthly reports for April of twenty twenty five. The adoption of the meeting minutes for April of twenty twenty five. The authorization to extend the contract bid for D P W. Uh free removal pruning, vertical mulching and stump grinding for contractor Alpine. The authorizase authorization to accept CHIPS, Pave New York, E W R and P O P funds for the state fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. The authorization to attend conference for police. The authorization to approve the Village of Pleasantville annual operating water budget reconciliation. The authorization to approve the noise waiver for the Mount Kisco Country Club. Uh authorization to approve the noise waiver for Into the Light. The authorization to use town property for the dog walk. Authorization to use town property uh for Horace Greeley High School students' senior experience. Uh authorization to approve the banner request for the strawberry festival. A street opening bond permit release number twenty twenty three dash zero zero two one. A resolution in support of the coastal rehabilitation and resilience projects grant application for the decommissioning of the Upper Minkle Dam. The authorization to share the service of other New York State County bids for the purchase of a twenty twenty five Ford F one fifty X L regular cab four by four. And the authorization to accept professional civil engineering and professional land surveying services for phase one of the proposed sidewalk replacement project. The mobile gas station located at the southeast intersection of South Bedford Road and King Street.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Alright, so we will now, we'll get to the consent agenda.
I move to adopt, and it's one of the P P P is a second consent agenda.
Second. Or second.
You second.
Second.
Thank you.
Big shot.
Sorry.
Good try, okay, uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of one hundred and thirty six thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and a penny.
I was just kidding.
Listed on the summary A P check register in detail, voucher detail report located May ninth, twenty twenty five. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Friday, May ninth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I. I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of two million seven hundred and ninety two thousand two hundred and eight nine dollars and thirty cents. Listed on the summary A P check register in detail, voucher detail report located May fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor? I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Ally seconds, all in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now just one minute, we've been getting some resolutions here and I just wanna make sure.
Should we have eleven and eleven and twelve?
I just wanna make sure that.
Yeah, I don't have an eleven.
There's eleven, a new eleven.
Here's an eleven.
Thank you.
I'm gonna be reading it, so I have both.
Okay, I'm good.
But but we all should um.
We all want.
I only have your ten.
Does everyone have eleven and twelve?
Here. Holly doesn't have eleven and twelve.
I'm gonna walk it over there.
We can share, we can share, we can share, we can share.
We will share.
Christina, don't worry about it, we can share.
No, Christina, no, we're good.
We're good.
We can share, yeah.
Okay, where were we?
We can't do sustainable Westchester.
We're we're on the three, Holly, you take this last last one, the three and then Ally, okay.
Sure. I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of two hundred and thirty three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and seventy four cents. Listed on the summary A P check register in detail, voucher detail report located May twenty third, twenty twenty five. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Friday, May twenty third, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, go ahead, Ally.
I move to accept the resignation of Kathy Byrne from the position of part-time receptionist within the Department of Public Works effective May sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the hiring of Fernando Rosas for the position of seasonal laborer within the Department of Public Works Water Unit at the hourly rate of nineteen dollars per hour, effective June second, twenty twenty five.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the change in pay re- sorry, the only thing is, I think the name was different. Yeah, in in the um executive summary, is it Matthew or Mrs. Thomas?
Good catch.
Yeah.
Um.
I think it's Tom, I think it's Thomas.
This is, I'm trying to see what it says in the.
I'm.
Tom, I think it's Tom, I think it's Tom.
It.
Agenda, it's this image.
I think Matthew may be wrong.
Um.
Okay.
I.
Well, then I got the memo right.
This is this is the actual.
Oh no, that's not the right memo.
It's um.
I think it's Thomas Antis.
Um let's see. Do you have the records, do you have the records that you were relying on?
Yeah. Yeah. Yep. There.
Oh, it is, uh yeah.
Yeah, Thomas on the memo.
I think it's Tom, I think he was a wrestler, I don't know his.
Yeah.
Well, just making sure, since there's a question.
Thomas.
Not a second. Okay.
It's Thomas.
Okay.
I move to authorize the change in period for Thomas Antis, who will serve as a recreation attendant within the Recreation Parks Department Summer Camp at the rate of twenty three fifty per hour, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Do the last one?
Go ahead, Jeremy.
I move to authorize the hiring of the following individuals from the position of recreation attendant within the recreation department at the corresponding rates indicated below.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move to authorize award of bid D P W twenty twenty five oh one water treatment chemicals to the following companies at the corresponding rates indicated below for a period of one year, effective June twenty twenty five, June twenty twenty six, with the possibility of a one-year extension.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do one more.
Um I move to I move to set a public hearing on a proposed local law to amend the Town of Newcastle Town Code, Chapter one twenty three. Vehicles and traffic article two parking by adding a new section one twenty three dash nine point one entitled No Camping on Public Places. After section one twenty three dash nine, public parking lots for June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, the Town of Newcastle Town Hall, seven P M, are soon thereafter reached on the town board agenda that evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Jen, go ahead.
I move to accept the proposal from Hudson and Pacific Designs for the September eleventh memorial sustainable landscape revitalization. Due in May twenty first, twenty twenty five, to restore the memorial with the authorized budget of sixty thousand dollars. In which thirty thousand is allocated to be used in twenty twenty five and thirty thousand will be used in twenty twenty six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to accept the proposal from Crichton Manning for a speed limit assessment and sign implementation within the Town of Newcastle for the total amount of forty five thousand dollars. As per the proposal dated May twentieth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the request from the Chappaqua Summer Scholarship Program to waive the rental fee of seventy five dollars to the use of Getty Park Baseball Field Number One. For a softball game to be held on June fifteenth, twenty twenty five. I move to authorize the request from the Chappaqua Summer Scholarship Program to waive the rental fee of three hundred and fifty dollars for the use of the community center for a cooking class on future date.
Someone else can be combined, a second.
Uh yeah, that is a question that I have, but it is a waiver for the Chappaqua Summer Scholarship Program on rental fees in general.
Five, yeah, yeah.
So we just um delineated or specified which fees they they are, but uh we don't have a lien here, but I I do believe it's a waiver for one entity.
But we we.
Yeah. For one entity, yes, we they just, it was just broken out, it's.
For one entity. Yeah, it's a.
One entity, but both events.
A second is, it should be okay.
Yes, correct. One entity for both events, yeah.
In one resolution. Yeah, so we'll clean up all the, yes.
One.
Still second.
Okay, all, yeah, and clarifying before we vote.
Thank you.
Okay.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um okay.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, everybody.
Second.
All in favor?
Everybody.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Okay.